About time.
I need to discipline myself. I keep saying that.
Okay.
See you later. Thank you.
I think Lee wants to leave this meeting. There you go. I knew she knew how to do that. All right, welcome everyone. Before we start tonight, I, uh... Let me read something. I'm gonna set the stage here a little bit. On 31824, the Lawrenceburg Police Department responded to an unconscious male in his vehicle at 548 Main Street near the Napa store. Sergeant Jacob Jump and Officer Bill Lyman arrived on the scene within minutes. They immediately noted the male was in severe medical distress. They were able to remove the subject from his vehicle and began CPR. They continued CPR until Lawrenceburg EMS was able to take over care for the patient. The subject was transported to St. Edeborne and eventually transferred to Christ Hospital in Cincinnati. After receiving medical care, the subject has reached out to LPD to confirm that he has been released and is feeling much better. He was able to meet Sergeant Jump and Officer Lyman and thank them for their quick action. It is believed that the quick initiation of CPR contributed greatly to his recovery. Responding agencies to this incident were Lawrenceburg Police, EMS, and Fire. They were also assisted at the scene by Greendale Police Department. Why do we do this? This is something that we, I think we all probably expect our first response, out of our first responders, right? When I was made aware of this, the first thing that came to mind to me was, uh... We always hear that our EMS folks saved this person or saved that person because of their quick response to this residence or that residence, or what they had to do on the way to the hospital. We've always heard about firemen being able to go in and do this and that and save this animal, or save this person, whatever the case may be. You'd always come hear that about police officers. And I think that it was just very... And listen, I'm not singling out police officers at all. I think all of our first responders are some of the best trained in southeastern Indiana, if not the state. And I think everybody could probably agree to that, including their leaders, both the chiefs and Director Clark. What I think is, needs recognized, is we had police officers that are usually the first people on the scene. And this time, it paid dividends that they knew what to do. For that gentleman may not be here today, and I think I heard it best from Director Clark in our staff meeting when we were talking about this a week ago. He absolutely thinks that they saved his life. And I just want to congratulate Officer Lyman and Mr. Jump back there. He, I tell you, guys, I know you guys have been with the force for a while and things like that. I know you don't run up on this stuff all the time. And, but it was your quick thinking and your willingness to do this, and we thank you for it, and I know that gentleman does.
Yes, sir. He said that he was lost twice on the way up, good friend of ours.
Okay.
Tom Taylor.
Good. Okay.
Awesome.
Got a face painter now.
Tommy? Tom Taylor, I know.
Tom Taylor.
Oh, it's Tom Taylor.
Yes.
That's who it was. Yeah, we went up to the hospital to see him.
I'll be darned. Okay.
And the person that was in the car with him was there. He was talking about how the police jumped right in.
Yeah, great. Well, guys, I want to thank you both. And, um, just, I know you probably, you guys look at it like it's your job, right? But, I mean, I've told our first responders this every time I address them at our yearly dinner and everything. I couldn't do your job, and I'm just thankful that we have people that are willing to do that job, so thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Now we gotta do business. All right, I would like to call to order the City of Lawrenceburg Board of Works meeting for tonight, April 1st, 2024. And could I get a roll call, Mr. Fettie?
Sure. Board Member Tommy Rillet.
Present.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, any announcements for this meeting? I don't have anything for this meeting. I have none, Mayor. Other than what I just did. Anything? Mr. Rillet, Mr. Bondurant. If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. So moved, Mayor. Uh, but a second.
Sir.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. New business, Mr. Welton. We got Pavilion CMC RFQ.
Yes, sir, Your Honor. Please, as the Board of Public Works and Safety, in Your Honor, we have two responses to the request for qualifications that we published. One is from Prus, P-R-U-S. The other is from Maxwell. So two construction manager firms that have submitted for consideration to be a construction manager on the Pavilion project. Both submittals meet the general requirements, and so what I would ask from the Board of Works is to allow us some time to speak to both of these firms, get a little bit more information about how the project will unfold, and then bring back a joint recommendation. We can have a work session late this week, early next week, or if it takes a little longer, it takes a little longer just to pick the right, pick the right group. So we won't make a final decision today. I think you guys both have the packets.
Correct.
So just, you know, take a look.
Shut them both today, though?
Yeah, well, they're both fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so, um, we're, they're not bid, so we're permitted to take as much time as we need to, to select one, and we can select them for any reason. So if you guys think about Mr. Rillet, Mr. Bondurant, and Your Honor, if you think about questions that have been asked that are more specific to this project, RFQs are typically a little general. Keep in mind that we'd like to do this with a CMC delivery method so that we work together with them to try to get a guaranteed maximum price and a completion date before we start the project, so it'll be kind of a pre-construction phase and a construction phase. We are, we have drawings, but we plan to do architecture and engineering in-house. And so Mr. Todd and his team will lead the architecture and engineering efforts. We'll select this construction manager, and those will be the folks that work toward a guaranteed maximum price that then we'll bring back to City Council to fund the project, and we'll know how much it'll cost and how much, how long it'll take.
Okay. Question?
No.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
All right, so I think all I want tonight is just maybe a motion to accept both of the RFQs. So if I can get a motion to accept the RFQs from Maxwell and Prus.
Yep, so moved.
Instruction.
So moved.
I'll second that, Mayor. All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. All right, I don't have any other new business nor any old business for Board of Works tonight, unless you all have something I forgot. If not, I want a motion to adjourn this meeting. So moved, Mayor. Uh, but a second?
Who'd you get on the first? I'll second.
Second, Brett?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Thank you. All right, the next meeting I'd like to call to order is the City of Lawrenceburg Utility Board meeting for April 1st, 2024. A roll call, Mr. Fettie?
All right, we got Board Member Tony Abbott.
Here.
Board Member Dylan Little.
Present.
Board Member Tommy Rillet.
Present.
Board Member Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Board Member Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
Utility Director Billy Kennett.
Here.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
President Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, any announcements, Mr. Director Kennett?
Yes, sir. We have some potential bad weather coming through here the next couple of days, so I thought it'd be a good idea just to remind you if there's any downed powered lines or communication lines, just call us and please don't touch them. You never know what lines are still hot and what are not hot, so you call us, we'll come out and respond and take a look at it, and, you know, just want to keep everybody safe.
If no other announcements, entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Oppose. Motion carries. How about a motion to approve a work session on March 14th?
So moved.
I'll second.
Second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. All right, thanks, guys. New business, Director Kennett. Looks like Walker Substation Maintenance Inspection.
Yes, sir. Just a brief history on our substation inspections. We have three substations. They were on a rotation of inspecting one each year. These are very detailed inspections. It's, the substations are very high-value asset, and so we definitely take care of them and make sure we're doing the proper inspections. The inspections had not been done in the past when I took over in, as the utility director, and so we put a plan in place to get caught up. And so last year, we did the Hollywood Substation and the Hospital Substation inspections. We did find some problems with that, and we made those repairs. It's definitely a preventative maintenance type item, and it is definitely necessary. So the plan was to do Hollywood and the Hospital Substation last year, and then do Walker this year. This will get us everything inspected again, and then from here on out, we'll do one substation a year, so every three years, we will have these inspections done. Eric Webster, our electric foreman, put together an RFQ, request for quotes. We had three responses. They were Utilities Instrumentation Services, and that amount was $25,725. Qualus Solutions for $26,997, and High Voltage Maintenance of $67,495. We did also ask Eaton. Eaton came in and did the Hollywood and Hospital subs for us last year, and they did not respond, so we did our due diligence to go out and get quotes. Utilities Instrument Services was the low bid. They were used by the previous utility director, so they do have experience here, working in our system. Qualus was formerly CE Power, and we've done quite a bit of work with CE Power. So after review, and the other thing is, Qualus came on site and looked at the equipment that we have in the Walker Substation, took pictures. The other two companies, Utilities Instrumentation and High Voltage Maintenance, did not come on site. So talked it over with Eric, and we would like to make a recommendation, even though they're a little bit more expensive, to use Qualus Solutions for the price of $26,997. And the reason for that is our comfort with Qualus Solutions and the work that they've done for us in the past. Not to say that Utilities Instrumentation would not do a good job. I just don't know them. I don't have any experience with them, and it's too important of an asset, so that's the reason we're making the recommendation for Qualus Solutions.
Do we, um... Hate to be the monkey wrench, as usual, but, I mean, it sounds like we did a bid, and I don't know if we can just not take the low bid.
We did quotes.
Quotes.
We did three quotes.
We gotta take the low quote, though. I mean, unless we disqualify the low quote.
Well, if we feel more comfortable with the other, didn't you say Qualus was the only one that came in and inspected the equipment?
Yeah.
I mean, that makes me feel better about what they're going, they're saying it's going...
Wasn't part of the quote, to come in and inspect.
No. Not that I'm aware of.
Well, and UIS did work with us previously, and I don't recall ever hearing anything bad about that.
I wouldn't recall.
I mean, the way that this was framed...
So Dell, I thought you said if we did three quotes, we could choose the contractor that we wanted.
Yeah, we gotta take the lower one.
Okay.
So, I mean, and that's, and that might be my fault, just explaining. So if you do a request for qualifications, then you're just, you're not asking for a price, you're asking for what they do and how they do it, and then you pick who you're most comfortable with, and then you engage with them. That's why you can pick whoever you want. But when you do quotes or bids, and what tells you if you do a quote or a bid, it's depending on the amount, then you just have to pick the lowest one.
Understood. So what I'd like to do is table this tonight so that we can go back and make sure that, you know, the site visit wasn't part of the qualifications.
Okay.
And so I'd like to ask to table that for tonight.
And that, again, that might be my fault, and I, if I didn't give you enough background.
Okay.
And I'll be glad to work with you after the meeting tonight.
Okay.
All right, I think the recommendation is to table the Walker Substation Maintenance Inspection for tonight. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second? Second, Mayor. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Before we move on, Billy, can you?
I appreciate it.
I wasn't able to find the information from the last, from the last year's project when we did this.
Okay.
Do you still have that?
Yeah, sure.
Will you send it to me, please?
Yeah. You want the final report?
Yeah, just from last year, yeah.
Yeah, for both Hollywood and...
Yeah.
And hospitals.
Yep, if you have one.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Next item is under Old Business. Director Kennett looks like you had a 120 Water Lead Service Line Agreement.
Yes, sir. And before I forget that, I had one other item come up between when we put the agenda together. We're doing the engineering study for the Ludlow Hill Sewer System, and we have flow monitoring in place. We signed a 90-day extension on that that takes us through the end of March. Fortunately and unfortunately, we haven't had a significant rain event, and so they are asking us to approve another 30 days on that, hoping that we'll hit a rain event so that they can study what that impact of a serious rain event would have.
You may want to start tonight.
Yeah, the additional cost is estimated around $12,000. We don't have a firm proposal, but I can follow up on that. But just wanted to see if the Utility Board would allow us to extend that one more month. We don't see it going past April on this. If we don't have a significant rain event in April, chances are, we're not going to get one again this year.
When they say significant, what is it?
It's...
At a certain amount of time?
Yeah, it, so we've had significant rain, but over a period of time, like over a period of days. What happens with our sewer system is it's the real quick dump, you know, within two, three-hour period where we get two inches or more. And that's really what we're looking for, and again, I hate to ask for it because it creates problems for everybody when we, when we get something like that, but we really need that data for the engineers to be able to really look at the true engineering models when they're reviewing that.
Let me ask you, Billy, do we have to go 30 days? Would they go a lot? If we get enough rain the next week or two, maybe drop it in two weeks?
Well, so, I don't know. The meters are still in place. They left them in place. Probably wouldn't be fair, I don't know, Lenny. That's, if it would happen tonight or tomorrow night, could they charge us for two days or three days in April? Maybe we can work that out. You know, but they usually traditionally rent these things by the month, but, you know, we could go by the week, you know? So if something, if a significant rain event happens in the next two days, I would try to negotiate that price down to a weekly rate versus, you know, because they've done... They've done very well on this, having this in place, especially with us extending it for 90 days like we did.
Yeah, this, this will be our third consecutive contract. Is that correct? We had an initial one, then an extension, and now another extension?
Right.
So hopefully, yeah, hopefully they're...
And like I said, it would not...
The key is getting that...
Yeah.
We gotta have that data.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a lot invested in that engineering study, and we're missing that key piece of data that we need.
Well, could we set it up to where you could ask, like, if we got the rainy day, and we could do it maybe for two weeks, and then, but if we don't, then maybe we need to go for the whole month?
Well, he just said he's gonna do that.
Yeah, that's what I know.
Based upon our rain.
Yeah.
Then we gotta...
Let's see, let's see if we get some rain.
I don't want it, but, yeah.
That's what you wish for.
We're gonna get it.
We need to... So I guess what I'd like is the approval to enter into another 30 days on this flow monitoring, and I can put in there in the contract that if we receive rainfall within a week or within two weeks, we would expect a prorated price based on that.
That's cool. That's the motion on the floor.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
All right, now to the 120 Water. We've been fortunate enough to receive the incentive grant money for the lead service line. This is a EPA requirement that we do this program, and we had entered into an agreement with 120 Water. They received a Phase 1 grant on this for us, and we are entering into the Phase 2 grant, and the amount of the Phase 2 grant is $9,947. This money is paid directly from the state to 120 Water. We don't see any of the invoices or anything for this. This is a no-cost item to us, so it is 100% grant money to help us do this lead service line. There is a, there will be a Phase 3, so Phase 1 and Phase 2 help us to prepare for Phase 3. There is Phase 3 incentive money, and that's the actual work that has to be done to replace any lead lines that are out there on the system, and that will be a competitive grant when we go into it. When we signed up for this program, Phase 1 and Phase 2, if you got in for Phase 1 and was approved, Phase 2 was guaranteed to be improved. The Phase 3 grant, which 120 Water will help us get ready for that grant application, and, but the Phase 3 will be competitive incentive award.
So what you're asking tonight is for approval of this grant in the amount of $9,000...
$9,47. Yes, sir.
Is that right?
With 120 Water. Yes, sir.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant amount of $9,947, which is paid directly to 120 Water for this service, lead service line.
I'll make that motion.
Dylan?
Second.
Second, Brett. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thanks, guys. Any other old business?
That's all I have, sir.
All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the claims. So moved. Second, Mayor. Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Motion to approve all payroll reports and checks once properly certified?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to call to order the City of Lawrenceburg Council meeting, first, 2024. I'll rise for pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One last time, Mayor, Mr. Fettie?
All right, Councilperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Councilperson Dylan Little.
Present.
Person Tommy Rillet.
Present.
Councilperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Councilperson Brett Bondurant.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Announcements, board reports, streets, alleys, and curbs downtown. Mr. Abbott?
We are good.
Streets, alleys, and curbs up on the hill. Mr. Fryman?
I'm good, sir.
Finance Department, Mr. Bondurant?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Parks and playgrounds, Mr. Little?
Parks are staying busy, and I'd like to stay, say thank you to the city workers for fixing the lights over at George Street Park.
Thank you. That, so that, I heard it was a break.
Yeah, it was fixed next day.
Okay, thank you. Fire department, Mr. Rillet?
No report, Mayor.
All right, I got a couple, want to remind you guys, Council Redevelopment Executive Joint Session tomorrow night at 5:00 here. I heard there might be a little pizza. And then I wanted to invite you, the city workers, we're having a solar eclipse in the park, a little gathering on Monday, starting with lunchtime, city workers are gonna grill out. They wanted to invite council. That'll start at noon. I'm over in the bathroom, preparing glasses.
Who's cooking? It don't matter.
It doesn't matter to you.
It's always the cooking I'm eating.
You can say it doesn't matter to you. You don't care who's cooking. Okay. Anybody else have any, now? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second? I'll second, Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. All right, under new business, we got Mr. Goble in the audience today. This is regarding the sign boards replacement quotes. This is up on US 50, Third Street, and also with Flare, Flare Grounds.
Flare Grounds.
That's correct.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I'm... Lost my train of thought for a second. We started looking at bids for these signs, because some of the things that we're asked to put on the sign boards just don't end up looking very good. I think, can't remember exactly when it was, but we had some promotional material from the Reds that they had given us to put on the boards, and, I mean, it was pixelated, couldn't hardly see it, so we sought quotes from, from three different sign companies kind of in the area to get those updated.
We needed to get higher resolution, right?
Yeah.
What you showed at the retreat.
Exactly, yeah. Bryson put together a thing for that. Higher resolution, more colors, better software, for actually... What's that? Both of them, yeah.
Eric Branson, Fifth Street.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Yeah, better control software, just a big step up from what we currently have.
From what I understand, well, from the resolution we've seen with, you guys recall the retreat, the difference that Bryson showed compared to what we have now, compared to going to the 6X.
Yeah, yeah, 6 millimeter, yep. Yeah, I, not sure I am either.
Altogether, like, I've never really been... Any, any kind of graphics on that, that sign has been tough to see, and this is going to be a huge improvement to the graphics. And we have the kids' pictures up there for graduation at Speedway. I think you're gonna be able to tell who they are this year.
Yeah, absolutely. Should hope so. We ultimately, you know, we went, we got quotes from Green Sign, Signorama, and the Sign Store. We ultimately ended up going with Green Sign. Not only were they the cheapest, but they were the only, only company out of the three that offered 5G communication on the signs, which we just, last year, had to, like, emergency swap out the modem in our Fair Ground sign because it was 3G and it had fallen behind. If we went with 4G today, it wouldn't be, probably within two years that we'd end up having to, to replace that modem, so...
What were the results of the quotes or bids that you got?
So, Green Sign, as I said, they were the cheapest. For Fair Grounds, it was $66,290. Short Street, $79,469, for a total cost of $145,759. Signorama was, for Fair Grounds, it was $71,213. Short Street was $86,927, for a combined cost of $158,141. And then the Sign Store was, Fair Grounds was $67,552, and Short Street, $85,573, for a combined of $153,125. So not small amounts.
Not small amounts, but I think, if I remember correctly, Bryson kind of spitballing some numbers at us during the retreat, I think all of these are significantly lower than we...
Yeah, we thought it was closer, I think, to maybe $200,000?
I remember hearing somewhere around $250,000.
Originally?
Yeah.
Now, we're just replacing the, you know, the, what do you call it, pixels?
Yeah, or the actual screen boards themselves, but the sign structure is going to remain in place. That's correct.
Questions?
Do they pick up Cinemax, too?
Well, I don't think we can get those broadcast rates.
Well, they're like the old Cinemax now, they scramble. They're like the old Cinemax now, they scrambled.
I don't have a question, but it's my understanding that the money's not coming from IT, it's coming from the parks, if I believe.
Well, it becomes either parks and/or a combination of parks and rainy day.
So.
Either, either or.
Maybe we, we, we got enough extra into parks if we had to do just the parks, but we'll take a closer look at it.
Yeah, this was not, this wasn't a budget item in, in IT. Any other questions? Did they, what kind of timeframe was that?
Uh, from when we start, probably about seven weeks, uh, is what, what was quoted. Now, they'll have to come and do, like, they're, they'll do a full survey, uh, to assess like power needs and, and things like that, but, so, about, about seven weeks.
And that's all included in this price?
That's correct.
All right. When I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the quote from Green Sign at a total cost of a hundred and forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete.
Have a great night.